Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will call the Monday, April 10th, 2017 Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. We do have, we have a quorum with three. We have some people that could not be in attendance this evening. Staff, I'll start with you. Do you have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We would like to change items four and five so that the architectural materials and process review can take place right after the Chase project.
Correct. Thank you. Any other changes?
No other changes.
Staff, changes to tonight's agenda? Nope. Hearing none, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Benkey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Vince, you're gonna have to step up tonight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay and the motion carries. That brings us to the second item this evening is the approval of the minutes for the March 27th, 2017 Planning Commission. Commissioners, do you have any comments or changes to the posted minutes from our meeting on the 27th?
I have no changes, Chair.
No changes. Staff?
No changes.
Hearing no changes, once again, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Benkey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay and the motion carries. That brings us to the third item on the agenda this evening. This is a continued application of Chase Real Estate for a planned unit development for a four-story mixed-use apartment complex with 172 units, 8,000 square feet of retail, underground and surface parking located at 50 Travelers Trail East. Ms. Dean, you, thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time back from California.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, as the Chair stated, this is a continuance. The specific property, to refresh the viewing audience and Planning Commission members, the specific location is at Nicollet Avenue South and Travelers Trail East. It's currently a vacant lot, part of a larger planning unit development. The specific zoning on the property is heart of the city one. It is part of a planning at development and that's consistent with the surrounding zoning of the properties to the east, to the west and to the south. It's bordered by Highway 13 to the north. This gives you a general overview of the context of the original development in relationship to surrounding area. The specific site, again, was part of a 2004 planning unit development approval which consisted of Cub Foods, retail, 30 townhomes, two mixed-use buildings, and bank office and retail building. The site is in close proximity to a future Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit Station as well as the current Burnsville Transit Station which serves Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. This is also part of a EDA TIF development contract is associated with this parcel. Comparison wise, from 2004 to the current 2017 proposal, it's very similar in nature. The proposal includes a four-story mixed-use building which is consistent with '04. Square footage of retail on the ground floor is 8,000 square feet which, again, is very consistent. The location of the retail is on First Avenue which mirrors existing mixed-use building as part of the Nicollet Plaza PUD. Specific units that are proposed in the, the original version that you saw back in March showed approximately 172 apartment units. It now shows 159 apartment units with the request for the ability to increase to the 172 units if additional parking is provided underground for each one of those units. And I can explain that a little further as we move on. That is an increase from the '04 approval. As far as the acre, or units per acre, the density, they are proposing 68.8 units per acre versus 52 units per acre. The parking, underground parking is proposed at 160 underground parking stalls and that does accommodate one per unit unobstructed, non-tandem spaces. There are 63 surface stalls that are proposed as well as adjacent on-street parking in front of the retail. There is also cross-axis parking available through private agreements. Change from the 2004 approval includes a larger courtyard area, swimming pool, and additional outdoor amenities. And then, as you can see from the chart below, the unit breakdown is different. There is an increase of approximately 40 units on the property. This was reviewed at the March 13th Planning Commission. It was continued to the March 27th Planning Commission meeting. I should also note that this was reviewed by the City Council in concept form at a January work session. The applicant wanted to check in to see if there was appetite for changing the EDA contract that specified from owner-occupied to apartments and also to see if the proposal was something that, that they were generally in support of. And so, that brings us to, fast forward to the March 13th Planning Commission meeting. This was reviewed. There was public testimony and there were four points that were brought up by the Planning Commission for further review and the reason for a continuance. One of the reasons for a continuance was to take a closer look at the architecture and to potentially refine some of the entry points as well as the retail side of it. Another issue was parking. The Planning Commission wanted the applicant to reexamine the parking situation as well as traffic impacts were brought up by members of the, a member of the audience or public testimony. So, staff took a look at that further as well as neighboring property owner concerns with the adjacent Nicollet Plaza LLC. As far as architecture, the applicant has provided revised renderings and elevations. Parking, the applicant has provided one parking stall underground, unobstructed for each one of the units. As far as traffic impacts, there is a condition added to the, to the report within engineering considerations that requires a traffic study one year after occupancy of the, assuming, if this were to be approved, should I say, that that would have to be conducted to see if any traffic improvements would have to be installed per the traffic study recommendations. And neighboring property owner concerns, staff, city staff as well as representation from Chase Real Estate and Nicollet Plaza did meet once here at City Hall and then there, it's my understanding that there was an off-site meeting between the two parties as well. I think I should have switched to this PowerPoint slide which basically gives an overview of what I've stated. No changes, or very minimal changes to the site plan. Basically, what you had seen at the last Planning Commission is very consistent with the, with the previous report as well as the overall configuration of the building is consistent with that 2004 plan. This gives you an overview of the landscaping features, buffering, some of the underground parking, garage, overhead garage door as well as the trash enclosure, recycling enclosure that's outside. And then, to help soften the building, there's landscaping around the, the street sides of the building as well as a pretty robust courtyard plan. And this is just a color version of that to view perspective. These are the revised elevations and I'll have the, the applicant is here in the audience and he could probably speak specifically to some of the changes that have been made. One of the items that was brought up, again, was the, the entry to the building on the south side of the, of the building off of, Travelers Trail. And that has since been refined as well as the retail component that faces First Avenue. And again, the applicant can get into more details about that. This is a perspective that shows some of the breaks in the building along Nicollet Avenue as well as Travelers Trail. And then, this is the corner where the residential and retail merge. So, this would be along First Avenue, ground floor commercial, again, with the three stories of residential up above along that east elevation. Floor plans, generally very amenity-rich, indoors as well. The ground floor has a concierge. I believe there's lounges and yoga rooms available for the tenants. Break, various breakdown of unit types along that first floor as well, along with the commercial along that eastern portion. And again, just to, the different levels. I won't get into too many details about that. Underground parking, the, as stated before, underground parking is minimum one underground parking per unit for that 159 units. So, there's actually 160 underground parking spaces, unobstructed. The, there is a request, however, if the applicant can show the ability to add an additional underground level, expand into the courtyard even, that the request is to go up to the 172 units. Staff is in support of that as long as these parking spaces are unobstructed, are accessible, and that one is provided for each unit underground. Just to recap on the previous request, or I shouldn't say previous request, but the previous staff report from that March 13th meeting, there are some deviations that are requested and staff felt that they were, the first one, that it is an increase in the density. However, since 2004, there has been a Orange Line station proposed and that's whenever you have Bus Rapid Transit station located in close proximity to a, to a use. It's considered transit-oriented development. The higher the densities, the more jobs, more employment, the more residents. That's, that's a good thing. So, staff is in support of that. The decrease in parking, the 422 parking spaces that's listed is a city code general requirement and this is applicable to the entire city. That parking requirement is based off of bedroom type and guest parking. The decrease is to deviation to 237 parking spaces. This is consistent with how the previous approval was applied as well as the heart of the city design framework. It's very consistent with that as well. And again, to mention, there are other transit facilities available as well as heart of the city parking ramp that's within a block of this facility. Building height, there are points in the building where it is taller than the minimum code requirement. However, because of the great changes, staff was in support of this request. There is a decrease in the build-to-line requirement from 11 feet to 8.8 feet. This is because, how the property line jogs in along Nicollet Avenue. It was very minimal where this was a request. It was a pretty specific spot along that property line. There is also a request in a decrease, the build-to-line requirement from 11 feet to 5 feet and this is to accommodate decks for the residential units. This is an amenity to the, the property and staff is in support of that. And then, to increase the build-to-line from 20 feet to 21.7 feet along Travelers Trail. And this, again, is due to property lines kind of jogging in funny ways there. And staff is in support of that minor deviation. Overall benefits, three that are highlighted here. Sites consistent with the previous approvals. The building is designed consistent with the heart of the city design framework manual. And mixed-use developments are beneficial to the future Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit project. Staff is recommending approval of the project according to the following conditions. That the previously approved, the conditions of the previously approved PUD are as applicable, shall remain in full force and effect, that the approvals for 159 units with the ability to increase to 172 apartment units as long as one underground parking unit, underground parking space per unit is provided. That one parking space shall be provided with each apartment unit within the underground enclosed parking garage. That an element of public art shall be included within the project development. This is consistent with other heart of the city projects as well. It's a benefit to the, the city as well. City code requires that parking lot lighting not exceed 20 feet and it's just a code requirement. The specifics weren't provided and that's, that's typical for the details of some of these items to come in at time of building permit, for example. So, we want to make sure that it still met code, any parking lot lighting or the, consistent with the overall PUD. Sign permits shall be obtained prior to any installation of exterior signage, again, consistent with current practices in city code. Bannerets on the light poles, staff wanted to highlight this as an opportunity for the applicant. You'll see them along the existing planning at development, for example, outside of Cub Foods. If the applicant or the property owner wants that ability, that that would, that is also included as a condition. The angled parking in front of the retail shall be built as concrete. That's consistent with many of the city right-of-way parking in pretty much all of the heart of the city except for, I believe, one location. The access at Nicollet Avenue shall remain right out only and this is for Cub Foods delivery truck traffic. The owner of Lot 1, Block 1 is responsible for maintaining the gate restricting access. So, this does restrict access for residents of the property and other commercial customers. Park dedication fees shall be calculated for the number of housing units beyond the 131 units that were originally anticipated in 2004. The current rate is listed in the conditions and this shall be, full building permit shall not be granted until this requirement is met. And that's consistent and standard with developments as such. And then, the requirement for a traffic study that one year after occupancy, the applicant will be required to provide a traffic study and there may be improvements that may come out, or recommendations for improvements that may come out of that study. It's possible that there may not be recommendations too, but we want to allow for that opportunity to exist in the future to address concerns that were brought up. And at that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Again, Joe with Chase Real Estate is here in the audience to answer more detailed questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I appreciate your time. And we do appreciate you coming back to me from California.
Oh, thank you. No delays. I got lucky.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Benkey?
I'm probably sure. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Dean. If, I have a question about the units. So, we're looking at considering 159 units up to 172 units.
Correct.
And that depends on the parking, if they can make that happen.
Right.
If the parking can't happen and it ends up being 159 units, the footprint of the building still stays the same. So, how does that affect the, the interior of the building? I mean, is it, would it just be less units? Or would there be space allocated to other common areas? I'm just trying to understand.
Perhaps the applicant can speak more to that. The footprint would remain the same. If they wanted to change the footprint, once this is approved, there's some minor modifications that an applicant can make after approvals. But if it got to the point where they're, they're going beyond that code flexibility, they likely would have to come back through a process. So, they might have to rework some things internally and I think that Joe could probably speak to more how that might be handled.
Okay. And I'll save another question for Joe. Is, if they are able to meet the 150 or 172 units, then is that just an administrative process with staff to say, "We, we got it"?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Workman, we'll have the applicant come up and you can ask those questions. Commissioner Benkey?
Thank you. Regina, I'm a little confused. One of the items that we talked about last time was a final set of plans that was consistent and quite honestly, I'm not seeing that again. You did, we did attach a couple of images to the package. And if you go to the elevations or the, the image, I had a couple more. I've never seen that.
Are the ones that you provided?
I've never, no, I've never seen, I've never seen this elevation before. I did see the next one. This one came with our package. And quite honestly, I'm more concerned about the, well, I'm concerned about all of it, of course, but the Nicollet Avenue elevation was something that I was concerned about and I hadn't seen it until now. The next thing is that there was a plan attached to this part of our package as well. And that plan was not in what you just went through. If you roll forward another page, this one. A completely different main floor plan was attached to our plan. It doesn't show anything like the Nicollet side of this building. And, you know, I'm, I'm stuck. I don't know which I'm looking at here. Is it this one? Is it the one that came with? My concern comes from the same comment that Commissioner Workman had. If the units change, the outside of the building is going to change. There's going to be additional decks. There's going to be a different setup of windows. The elevation that I see, that you have to back here, I guess maybe I'll bring this one over to you. Because this is the one that I got in my package. I don't know if you can put this on the overhead or not? If, if we look at this plan, Nicollet Avenue side is the left side. And you can see it's a straight line. And I presume this was the smaller unit count. But if you then go back to the image that you just provided of the Nicollet Avenue side of the building, which is back, this one, that one. You can see there's relief here. There's a block in the middle of the building that sets out a way. This is not the same building. So, once again, we don't have a complete set of plans to look at. You know, that is one element here that I'm, I'm really stuck on. Again, I haven't seen anything that addresses the entry outside of, there's a comment that says that it did. I don't know if that's still coming or not. Was there other plans that didn't make it into the package or? My, my agenda package, I mean, I have it right here too. It doesn't have that, that image. And like I say, it has a different floor plan. It has only one floor plan where there's four, I guess there's four floors. So, I don't know if it was just something with my particular agenda package or if it was something else.
I'm looking at my agenda package and it's consistent with the rendering here shown.
This one or the, or the other one?
With the rendering shown right now on the screen.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have that. I don't think.
Ms. Dean, in our, in our background, we, we did have just the one exterior photo of the changes to the, which would be the southeast corner, which would have a little bit of, 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 of the retail to it. This particular picture, we, we did not have in our background.
Correct. You did not have this. Correct, you did not have this 3D rendering in your packet, that is correct, I did receive this, and I was on vacation for the last five days, so I did receive it sometime between Wednesday and today, and I did include this when I arrived this evening, so, no, you do not have this specific 3D image, but we thought it would be, to help give perspective, that we would include it in the presentation, and I apologize for you not receiving that earlier.
Okay, and I guess this sort of shows the entry that we're talking about on Traveler's Trail, and it's sort of at the bottom of the right side of the building. In front of the tree to the...
Right here?
No, the next one, sort of over a little, yeah, I only know it's there because of, I looked at the plan, I guess, it's on the bottom, yeah, so, still not an entry, okay.
The next photograph, I think, is then the other half of that, correct?
No, this, the entry, it would be off the screen to the left on this, this is the corner.
Oh, the actual entry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the corner first in Travelers, this is the corner Nicollet in Travelers, so the entry is, it's that spot right there, if you can see that. Okay, yeah, I think that, that at least clears me up a little bit, I guess, the plan that I handed you, I don't know if that's the plan for the building with 159 units, or if that's the plan for 172, and I think maybe Joe might need to answer that, it's just, it's not consistent with the elevation.
I know that included in your packet was the current request.
Right.
The previous background from the planning commission meetings.
Right.
As well as information from 2004.
Right. And I think, I think there was a reference that they really haven't changed the plan from what the previous, from what the meeting that we continued was, but they did, because they went from 172 units to 159, and somehow that has to be addressed on the outside of the building, with decks, with windows, with the meter, the way that the building continues across there, and again, that is going to end up going to Joe, I think, in terms of how that's supposed to happen, but I think that answers that question.
Just real quick, I do know that, you know, we had in our background, we had tonight's background, we had from the continuation.
Right.
And the floor plan that was given to us on the continuation did show the relief of the outside of the building.
Correct, but that was also the 172.
Yeah, this was not, you know, so there's a bit of a confusion from the standpoint. We do have a plan that shows the relief on Nicollet Avenue, but it was under the information from, and I don't want to get the dates, from the 3/27 meeting.
Right.
Which was in our background.
Right.
But it was tied up in the 3/27 background information, not the 4/10 meeting.
Correct, and that's what's confusing me, is that there's a different plan in there that doesn't show that, but yet this elevation does, and that's inconsistent again, so. Okay, so that's the big thing for staff, I think.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Benke?
I guess, I was, I think I'm going to talk about this instead of ask, and I think you can confirm it, and I think Deb might have to weigh in a little bit here, too. I was concerned because while the staff report from 2017 and the staff report from 2004 were included, the minutes from 2004 were included, I didn't see, I see the 8,017, and then I saw the 10,195 square feet that was approved in 2004, and I didn't really see anything that supported what the applicant had said, that there was a range, and that they chose to go with the bottom of the range. What I find out now is that the TIF-EDA contract has a range in it, but that wasn't part of our background, I just found that out.
That's correct, Commissioner Benke, up until very recently, the EDA information is done at city council when the EDA meets.
Right.
And those TIF agreements and things usually do not, or did not, come before the planning commission, so I think that's probably why, why there's a difference. Those contracts also go through the Economic Development Commission, so they run on separate tracks, and I think that's probably where that came from.
Right, but again, that was something that I wasn't seeing, and it was, it wasn't coming together from the reports. Yeah, I think the rest of my questions are more appropriate for the applicant.
Okay. Can we have the applicant step up to the podium, and I know you've been here before, but give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, I am Joe McQuain, I am the Development Manager at Chase Real Estate, we're on County Road 42.
So thanks for coming back this evening.
You are welcome.
It's a beautiful night to be at City Hall, rainy and going to snow outside.
I may come back from California.
I think maybe like four more people will point that out to her before the evening is over.
Okay, well, I can get to your two questions maybe at the end, I do have three items that I quickly like to cover, that I think are relevant to this whole project and related to our last meeting, so can you hear me? Okay?
We can. Anything you need up on the podium?
Eventually, I'll need something here, might as well just...
Typically, when you put it underneath that little screen thing, it magically appears on our TV screens. It does, really.
Does it? Okay, I won't look at this thing.
See? Look, we're looking at your notes now, so make sure they're good.
So I got the PUD in front of me. Okay, well, I'm going to start with my three items here, so, what I'd first like to talk about would be to update you on what occurred over the past month since our last meeting. I know that HJ's attorney, that would be Nicollet Plaza LLC, brought to light the private declaration and parking situation that may have confused many of us, so I'd like to provide some clarity on the PUD and the declaration, I have those in front of me. Item two, I'd like to also quickly review our current proposal and a few updates we've had, and lastly, I do have some updated renderings, and I'd like to show some precedent images that are examples of some architectural details that we are utilizing. So, part one, having put a purchase agreement together on this property in September of 2016, the first organization that we did reach out to for a meeting was HJ Development, and that was requested on September 29th of last fall, and this was to communicate our proposal and our goals. We understand at Chase the development process very well, and of course thoroughly read all the PUD, the EDA, and all the private agreements associated with Nicollet Plaza during the process of our due diligence prior to signing any purchase agreement. We like to know, of course, what we are allowed to build before we put any property under contract. Unfortunately, we did not receive any interest from HJ last fall or winter to meet or to review our proposal until just a few weeks before our first planning commission hearing. And like I said at that meeting, HJ's attorney brought to light the private declaration. This declaration of easements, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which I have, is more or less a document stating the easements across the property, and how the common areas will be maintained, and how development will follow the intent of the PUD. It is also a public document, it's on city record, it's part of all the agreements with the PUD, and I did provide it with, to city staff earlier this year. So despite what arguments were brought up at our last meeting, I believe, and I have my notes here, that we fully meet the conditions of the private declaration, I do have those here, and those were provided to HJ Development last week. If you need to read all these, basically, the conditions of the private agreement are that the project meets one building per lot, which we meet, that the project meets a maximum height under 75 feet, which we meet, that we meet the permissible land area, we are utilizing the same footprint. We're under the rentable square feet, ours is around 153,000 square feet of rentable units, and their limit was 181,000, and then a lot of these are screening of roof mechanical equipment, and things not quite as important. But finally, at the bottom, the use, we believe we are meeting the intended use, that the project is consistent with the intended use as a mixed-use housing development, having primarily residential units with, yes, the minimum of 8,000 square feet of mixed-use commercial space. So the other major concern brought up by Nicollet Plaza was, of course, the parking math, and per their attorney's math, our project would require over 400 stalls per that generic city code that is irrelevant to this planned unit development. A PUD has its own enforceable rules, which is why a contract and a master plan is drawn up and approved. So I do have the PUD with me, because I think it's worth noting, that under the development items, don't give us much space here.
It's okay.
I'm kidding. So, this is page three of the PUD, number seven is Plan Unit Development Approvals, if you can see that, and the first item, A, says cross-access and parking easements shall be prepared for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, not Lot A, we are Lot A, or, excuse me, we are Lot 3, mentioned there. It is also worth noting that the first item in the private declaration, these were all signed on the same day, so they all correlate, the first item on the first page is the easement declaration and grants, access and parking, if you guys can read that enough, so. And this is basically declaring that the easement rights for all property owners for the use of the parking facilities located with each lot. So the entire development, regardless of us providing enough parking on our own property, was designed to share parking stalls and count all of them for proof of parking. So for proof of parking, which we've been over, and over the last couple of months, we can see this again on the declaration, further, it's item four, I have this marked. And this basically discusses, discusses that in any time developing a property, the owner of each out parcel may satisfy such parking requirements by taking into consideration any parking spaces located outside such out parcel, that may be subject to the easement rights, and the first page states that all lots have the easement rights. Okay. Enough of that, so...
Joe, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
There was some additional information on that last part?
Yes.
However, any restaurant operating on Lot 3?
Yeah, if I have a restaurant, I have to provide additional, only if I have a restaurant. We don't plan to have a restaurant, so, that is the one condition.
Okay, so this is where your comment about the covenants not really allowing a restaurant came in from the previous meeting.
Well, there are restrictions, there's another document, a use restrictions document.
Right.
That I have a square footage limit for certain types of restaurants. Again, that's a private agreement, which, I don't know if that's privy to us, so, okay, I have another note, here is the kind of diagram that I put together for HJ, and it's relevant to tonight. We believe that the declaration the PUD allows for cross-parking across the entire development, however, the attorney for HJ argues that it's only for the out parcels, regardless, we can use proof of parking for the outlets, the outlets are Lots 3 and 4, and Lot A, and I have those highlighted in red, and you can see all those numbers of the parking stalls that are allowed to be shared per the PUD and per the declaration, we have 249 stalls that can be used. Okay.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you do that, just real quick? Ms. Dean, I know it's a condition, but we keep, we talk about the Nicollet Avenue right out only, and it specifically has to be maintained by Lot 1, which is not their lot, can you, why is that something that's a condition against Lot 3?
Do you want to speak to that further, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, the original traffic study was done, illustrated that, you know, people were to be routed to Traveler's Trail to that intersection, because it signaled, the agreement is for that to be a right-out only, I mean, it's not a good access point for anything other than, I mean, the original desire was for the actual loading of trucks, unloading of trucks for Cub Foods, that's, otherwise, I don't even know if there would have been an access even allowed, period, off of there, but that condition essentially came into play because of the trucks, so, it does, you know, it leaves a perceived exit there, which is going to be difficult, I would imagine, at times to deal with, the gate's going to have to be up and operable at all times, but it's not a desired location for an exit, other than for this loading and unloading for Cub Foods vehicles.
Okay, I just, I understand.
Joe, your pen was almost right there, can you point, lay your pen on the drawing, on the photo, and show us that driveway?
All right.
That one right there?
Yeah.
Right.
And we have, we agree not to use it as an...
Okay. I was just wondering why it was a condition against your application.
It's actually a condition based on this road being county.
Yeah.
And they don't want traffic crossing all these to utilize the county road, it's complicated.
Really, the only, the condition is in fact, because Lot 1 is responsible for maintaining the control device, which in most cases hasn't worked since it was put in place.
I don't think it's there now.
It's not right now.
No.
No, they've provided proof that they've ordered a new gate, we'll have to obviously keep a little bit better eye on that gate.
I just wanted to make sure why that was on your condition, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine, I mean, I just was looking at that as well, that's a different point, I'm going to let Joe finish, because...
Thank you. So, that's all I have for parking, but we have shown the proof of parking per the easements, we've provided our own parking math on our residents at prior meetings, and we took another month to work with our neighbor, and that would be HJ, and the city as well, on more meetings regarding parking. In addition to the 900-plus stalls in the development, there is a free heart of the city parking facility located 300 feet away and bus transit surrounding the property. All right, so one last note on our, on the HJ sense, we've been more than cooperative in reaching out to Nicollet Plaza LLC, providing all kinds of data, our plans, and offering to tour our properties, including the one just four miles up the road on County Road 13. We submitted our current plans again to HJ for their official review, whatever approval or non-approval by HJ is between HJ and Chase, as goes with any private matter. Their approval of the plans is based on a private agreement, and should not have bearing on the public approval before us tonight. One last important note, regarding how PUDs operate, I would like to, one last contract thing. I think it's worth noting that item six of the PUD does have a changes in official controls note, and I'm sure a lot of us are familiar with PUDs, but it basically provides a way out for the city in case, let's say, development never occurs, so if you read that, it basically states that after five years, the city has officials, official control to amend the development density in the lot layout and require any new compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. So, we are confident in our proposal being in compliance with both the PUD and the private declaration, we look forward to having great residents, and will no doubt enhance business in Nicollet Plaza by finally bringing a high-quality project to this vacant site after 13 years of intended development. Okay, I'm about to finish up, so our current proposal is 159 units, yes, ranging to 171. Underground parking will be expanded underneath the courtyard to meet that one-to-one. Also, based on comments from our last PC meetings, we have increased the amount of glass storefront along First Avenue, if you were able to notice that on the elevations and the rendering, we enhanced the entry and door off of Traveler's Trail, we also situated more common rooms and the office to absorb more frontage along Travelers, I'll show you that in a second, and that will help identify the building as an active pedestrian entryway, and will showcase more of the common rooms, I think, off Travelers. Okay. So that's where we get to my final renderings, which you've already seen, again, more, a lot more glass, based on last meeting's comments, and this was the updated rendering. So this is a plan, so, I guess my question for Steve would be, at what level of detail do we need to be at when, at this stage, when, right here you can see is what is a two-bedroom unit, it's our largest two-bedroom unit, it's 38 feet wide, we have a, our smallest one-bedroom, that we... Our smallest one-bedroom that we completely nixed on that 159-unit plan. When we went further back and realized, we just eliminated our... Most of it. The starter unit in our project, the one that's $1,300. This is a $2,400 unit. When we went down in unit count, we had to eliminate all those small stacks. So simply enough, that unit and design basically stays the same. We split it in half because we can use 18-foot trusses and bear, and we would have that stack would become two one-bedrooms versus a two-bedroom. And that would only happen at two locations on the building. So we would get eight more units, 167 total units is currently the proposal I'm working on with our architects. And we can make that work with one underground dedicated parking. I think these were all provided last time? I know I had... We had the boards.
I haven't seen this one.
This is a new rendering. That's okay, go ahead.
I know I've provided this. This is, you know, looking from back near the barbecue place, probably. Here are the updated renderings, you have a new package. So south entry, this is... This is what would be more windows onto amenities, and we actually have office here. I mean, like I said, I'm going to show you some precedents, because these don't always help.
I can probably have Regina find the one that I... I found two that are not this kind of architecture, but it does talk about what I'm talking about. And Regina, could you pull the one that says GL1 or GL2? I forget which one it is. It's... You were getting to his at the end of this. That's Cedar Flats. That's your front right now. That's your run... That's your front door. Now, that is from the parking lot, not... Which is not the one I'm talking about, but...
Yeah, that's in Eagan, yeah.
Right, okay, so then keep going. This is across the street, okay? That's a street entrance. There's a unit above it, but that says this is a front door. Okay? And, you know, I'm not... I can't sit here and say, well, how much more detail do you need to add? Like, that's... I mean, I do that in business, but I need to have your guy do what's appropriate for the architecture that you have for this building. And part of the problem, I think, is that that is not really a front door, which is probably why you're having a struggle with it, but yet...
That is a contemporary building that we designed three years ago that was also more curtailed by the city. That was part of the planned unit development as well.
Cedar Flats?
Flats at Cedar Grove. So I would have liked to rather have you look at Victoria Park, the project. It's more similar in a traditional-style architecture. I don't know if we have any that was on file, but it's a...
Okay. But anyway, I guess the part that I'm getting at is that even now with that image, I don't see... I only reason, again, that I know that there's a front... That there is a door there, and it doesn't come across to me as a front door. And again, this is a walkable neighborhood. It's transitory in development, you know? It's a pseudo-urban area. And because of that, if you don't address the street...
I completely agree. Can I show you the...
Yep.
More of my stuff?
Sure, go ahead.
Here we are, okay. Here's... This is my sketch from where the architects took from. So this is the entry facing the parking. And all of our architecture... This is what we're going for. And now, whether or not Revit and 2D drawings can fix that...
So this is...
This is what we're going for. This is what you should be seeing on the corners. Where are my 3D corners that you saw earlier? I mean, it's nearly identical. We're already talking about how to get this metal detail.
Okay.
And the two-story span here.
Sure.
We're not... We can't copy everything, but it's going to be pretty similar. I want you to think of that when we think of this building.
Okay. And Joe, keep in mind, I love what you're doing here. That's never been the issue. The issue is, it's a... To me, it's 85% of what's supposed to happen in Heart of the City, and the last 15% is what I'm trying to push toward. And, you know, we might not get all of that. We might not get any of it. But yet, I have to bring up the areas that I don't see as matching the framework for Heart of the City.
Can we clarify, though? Ms. Dean, what the applicant has put in front of us does meet...
They do meet our city code, and they do meet the design framework.
We did have that... There's that page, that document that you did yeses for all of the architectural... So I mean, I would recommend, if there are architectural critiques... I mean, we're always in favor of work sessions versus submitting and having one evening to discuss, so that's here and there. Again, here's a corner of the same project precedent that we're looking at. I mean, you can see that kind of in our design. We're bringing the metal up and down around kind of these heavy brick corners. We have... We're going to do a very similar, you know, banding at the bottom. And then these details at the windows, we're kind of gaining the idea from down the street. I think this is a very nice project. We also have the Buff Foundation that will almost nearly match this down the street. Here's the building that our architect and the building I currently live in. We're going to, without saying copy, but do something very similar to this window bay. This is a window bay treatment that you'll... You see throughout our elevations. That's kind of a closer entry. This is what we envision. I'd like you to see Victoria Park, because we do a similar two-story glass entry with a steel canopy.
And to me, this is a front entry. I mean, I wouldn't have any trouble with this, but it isn't what's being shown on the drawing right now. And that's where my issue is.
Well, I will... I tend to agree. We are only in early design phase. These things get kicked out down the road. I know that we are submitting quite a bit more detail than the original 2004 plan. Here's an example of what our storefront, I think, we'll walk... Be similar to: lighting, full brick, tall windows, and the kind of signage that I talked about in our last meeting. And we do like some landscape. We would probably have this landscape up against the window, however.
That's... Actually, that's a point I think I still object to. Regina, can you go back to the Nicolet Plaza building across the street? And I think this is a really good example why I sort of object to the comment that we're mirroring what's across the street. Okay, this is the... This is the Travelers Trail view of the adjacent building. This is the First Avenue building, so this is what we're supposedly mirroring. But yet, this retail has no plantings blocking access to the retail. You know, to me, I think all of the landscaping that's along the building needs to move down to the curb or into the planting beds that are out there, so that you're not screening the retail from the pedestrians. It's counter to the pedestrian experience. And that comes right out of the... That comes right out of the framework, the design framework with the streets.
I think where we got the idea was actually up at the Sherman property. I drove by it again today, because we will have a lot of residential walkouts, which is what, I guess, the feel of travelers should be like. But we're not talking... What I'm talking about along the storefront is not going to be trees. It's going to be tall grasses, which is more native to the Midwest, but...
In the commercial streets section of the framework, it basically talks about open beds for trees and flowers, but they're all away from the building. And the design framework shows sidewalks right up to the retail edge, and that's not what you're proposing across the street.
Ms. Dean, can you clarify that for us from the standpoint of staff believes for our current zoning, this application meets it?
The application meets our current code as far as for landscaping, as Commissioner Benke mentioned, that the design framework, it's a guide, guiding principles, for example. With any proposal, applicant has the opportunity to make changes, make requests, and I think they're adding some of their own style and own flair to this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
That's about all I have, yeah. If there's any... I mean, we're happy to take recommendations on design. I think tonight is more about approval of a 159 to 171 apartment building that I think 95 or 80% meets the intent of the design with the Heart of the City guidelines. So... And then finally, I guess this is a very small detail, but I'm trying to help you envision what it's like. We won't have the gate here, but we're going to have some type of promenade, or what you call of marching columns, as you get to the front entry in the back.
This is...
This would be the planted landscape courtyard.
In the courtyard.
Yeah, and we would have to have a gate on the courtyard, because there's a pool. But we're doing this kind of more traditional, classy, you know, old globe lights. And we would have steps here, but I'm excited for it.
Then, do you know if the... If the glass along First Avenue was upsized to the 80% requirement?
80% requirement?
Yeah.
Is it 80%? Well, wait.
Of the frontage.
Would that be taken from ground floor to...
No, no, it's strictly in the retail portion.
I know that we did a takeoff for materials, and I know glass was part of that takeoff. It was around 35%, but I don't think we looked specifically at the commercial.
Right.
I do know that our glass will not be reflective compared to the one across the street.
Yeah, well, you know, reflective blinds...
And we'll have better signage, but I don't... We're going to be complimentary to the building next door. I think it's a sharp building. We're going to add our own character to it, so...
No, I agree. I agree.
That's all I have for my stuff, so I can...
Okay, so from your... Okay, so in order to upsize the number of units, you really don't change the look of that exterior from the image that you showed us. So whatever plan that was that I had brought over to Regina, that must have been something else.
I think...
Basically, the Nicolet wall was a straight line on that one.
Yeah. I apologize. I'm not sure... This graphic doesn't have a date on it.
No. And it was... It was a single page, so I wasn't... I didn't have any context for it to know for sure where it came from.
It may have accidentally been included. I apologize.
Okay. I guess the only other thing I noticed was that your... Flats at Cedar Grove, all the decks are recessed. And on this building, none of the decks... Well, pardon me.
Some of the decks.
Of the decks along Nicolet, only two out of nine stacks of decks are recessed. And I guess is there a reason why you're treating the Nicolet side different than the First Avenue and the Travelers Trail side? Both Travelers Trail and Nicolet and First Avenue appear to have recessed decks as part of their design.
And we try to do the recessed decks at the... Near the corners, so that they can help add that relief to make the corners pop out. And then we only do recessed above the... We had to make those units especially deep in order to get the 8,000-square-feet retail. So those are recessed and covered with a roof. Those are special conditions. Along, your question is, why do we have so many hung balconies? Well, one thing we're moving away from Cedar Grove is because of so many ins and outs and ins and outs. I think a more traditional building does not have all those breaks. That building is primarily metal. I think a traditional building has more solid, long-length runs of brick.
I guess I'm not seeing that in your elevations, so I'm not quite going there. I think it feels like the Nicolet side is being downgraded a little bit. And again, I'm looking about...
We're looking at a Revit model to be.
I work in this business. I know... I understand the Revit, but that's part of the problem, Joe, is that we've had plans brought before us before, and then what gets built is different. And it... Quite honestly, when you change things like this, it could change how the vote would have gone. And that's part of the problem, is if all of a sudden you decide you're going to change the brick color, and I'm just using it as an example, that change of brick color could have caused a different vote. And that's why I'm struggling with how fluid a lot of these design choices still seem to be.
I think our design... Our exterior design has been tweaked very, very minimally. I know we've always had four stories of brick along the First Avenue side, and we've always had the three-story with the darker fourth-floor dark bronze metal. Because we've had to shift... We've basically been playing with the city and our neighbor on how to provide a development proposal within a certain unit count. And like you said, those unit counts change very subtly, but they change the exteriors.
Right.
Like I've told Regina, a balcony may move eight feet here or there. A large window may move from this bay to there. We're here tonight, I think, to really meet the intent of the proposal.
And if I can maybe interject, architecture is a big portion of Heart of the City. However, there's other elements that we're looking at as well, the zoning, the land uses, overall consistent with the planned unit development. Does this make sense for the city on this site? And from a staff standpoint, holistically, yes. Yes, it does, and that's our position.
I agree. I think the charge of us being technical, you know, maybe I'm carrying it further than I need to at this point, but yet, I don't know if I'm going to see anything else down the road to make these comments on. And that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I agree with that, and I think that's why we had a work session with the... I think that's why we had a neighborhood meeting. I think that's why we've had probably four or five meetings with Regina and staff. I would completely... We're open. That's why I kind of read the process of providing you a design that you may critique more. Let's be part of the process, I guess, earlier on.
I agree, Joe. I wish there was more time at this level for us to talk about that kind of stuff, because it... I don't... There are times where I don't think it's fair that you come in and then we get to talk like this about it at this point, where seeing it in an earlier time could definitely help.
Anything else, Commissioner Benke?
I... Just one question back to staff, I think, and...
Ms. Dean?
Yeah. This whole issue of the private covenants that we don't appear to have any control over, but thoroughly affect things that can happen in Heart of the City is very disconcerting.
And that could happen to any development, any proposal that comes forward. There, you know, could be private agreements, and those things need to get worked out in order for development to happen and for...
It seems inconsistent with the framework. You know, if they're being... If they're being held to the fire for parking, but the framework, right from the start, talks about, you know, using cross-easements for parking, that doesn't feel like it's being handled.
I think, quite honestly, Commissioner Benke, there's a difference between what was stated to our meeting and what was provided to us tonight in a legal document, so...
That's the parking restaurant. You know, I mean, again, Heart of the City, in order to be vibrant, needs certain uses. And if all of a sudden, a particular landowner is restricting another landowner in being able to provide that, that's a problem to me.
We're under the impression that the private agreement cannot supersede the PUD.
I would love to have our city attorney address that, but I'm not going to ask him that question right now.
Commissioner Benke, any other questions for staff?
I think that's... I think I'm good for now.
Commissioner Workman, you had questions for the applicant?
I think Joe covered most of what I was going after, so... Thank you.
I would like to say that I think about it a little differently. I don't need to see more detail. I'm in support of this application. I know that there could be minor tweaks. The process that we're at today, I know we have had issues that have been in front of us, and there is what something is supposed to look like and when it's built, what it looks like, but that's the risk. And I'm... I need to trust staff that what you've presented in front of us meets the code and our zoning ordinance, and once it's done, it will meet that. And I'm comfortable with that. I like what you've done with the retail. And I also know that I trust the applicant from the standpoint of how much retail that they believe they can have. So I would be in support of this application this evening, but we do have to... Unless we had no other... I need to have a public... I need to kind of complete the public hearing, and then we'll kind of finish with some questions.
One question, if there... Do I have a chance to come up if there are...
You do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We... On the 27th, we had... We opened a public hearing, and we took some comments. And we continued the application till this evening. So I am going to, not necessarily reopen, but continue the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak to this application, please give us your name and address for the record. I would ask, sir, that we've had a couple of public hearings, and so I would ask specifically for any information that you provide this evening that would be new, that's not... that would be new, that's not in our background, that we haven't already heard in a statement.
Okay, my name is Jeff Carview and I'm with Nicollet Plaza. I'm the owner of that project and we were with this project from the beginning. I am too confused with what's being requested and submitted. Joe, I talked about a lot of the private development agreements. Yes, there's a lot of private agreements that we have to go through, which lays out the HOC groundwork and the density and the parking are the, are the major issues. Back in 2004, the project was approved with 131 units. And the HOC laid out, you know, up to 56 units per acre. And they're asking, and I actually received a letter as the declarant of the entire project, that they were going to be requesting 167 units of approval. And I share a lot of the same questions and concerns you guys have because, you know, I, I am being asked for approval of something, but I do not have all the detail. And today, for example, was the first time I heard that it would go down to 159 units. I did the math on if they requested 167 units and the HOC points to city code, points to parking ratios. And based on the city code and the HOC, which is on the city website, it would say it's 43% underparked. So as a declarant, I know that's a private agreement, but we are concerned of not necessarily traffic. Traffic's good. Traffic's good for retail. I'm not opposed to the project. But I'm, I'm, I'm taking the position that I'm not going to approve it in the private deck action or the, the declaration because I haven't been provided good enough info to approve it. The smaller issues on our stuff that we haven't even got to are the architectural and whatnot. Technically, it says they need to submit plans to me and, and that we, we have the right to, not unreasonably withhold them, but when we invested in the project and condo owners invested in the project and you, you, you try to get a project approved with that much underparked, it has, it affects the other lot owners, affects the other residents of the project. And so that's, that's the position that we're taking. So here today, I just wanted to verbalize the, the parking and the density. And, and I don't need to get into the private agreement because that's not between the city and, and us. But basically, it lays out a lot of what the city codes are and it points to city code. And it says your lot has to be self-parked. And so those are issues that we'll take up with the applicant in, in private discussion, however, however it goes about. But I'm standing up here saying that that's the, that's the part of it that we're concerned with. We're not, we're not concerned with apartments. We're not concerned with that. But I think the number of units is, is what we're concerned with, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else, sir? Okay, yes. Commissioner Benke?
Sir, I'm looking back at the map. It does appear that your building is fairly confined as well. Did you do a comparison on your building in terms of how, how it may or may not be underparked?
No, I mean, it's, back when we got the project approved, you know, it, it was, it was the entire project. And obviously, you know, and what I get concerned with is people look at our parking lot and say it's big. Well, it is big, but it's also our parking lot. It means that we can share parking and a resident can park over there and one of our tenants could park in their parking lot. But it doesn't mean that you can use my parking lot for proof of parking.
Right.
And that's where our concern comes in. And that's like me saying, well, let me add another 20,000 square feet to our project because the parking lot over at the condo unit has, you know, 80 stalls on the surface. And, and so as a whole, it needs to work. So that's, that's, I was involved from day one. I mean, I was involved when it was a Kmart and I was involved, you know, we were the, the owners behind the applicant back when it was open. And we were, I remember putting those agreements together with KSH and, and Klingel Hudson, Denny Safe and, and those groups. So I know, I know the intent behind it and it's, and so we are trying to be good neighbors, but I don't think it's fair for an applicant to try to underpark his project and put his cars on my lot because that will bring issues later. And, and so that's, but again, that would be a private matter.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I do have a question of staff real quick, I guess.
Can I?
It was a clarification, the density that he just brought up. The density number that you had in the background, is that for 159 units, 167 units, or 172 units?
172 units. It's based off of the.
The max.
The max.
Okay, thank you.
This is still a public hearing. If you would like to step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Daughing. And I have a retail condo unit in the building just to the east of the proposed project. And I.
We had a picture of your building up earlier, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I'm, as, as the last speaker, I'm also concerned about the size of this new project. When I purchased 10 years ago, it was proposed about 130 units. And now I know that currently, if you drive by at any particular time, the entire First Avenue of, of our building is completely full. We have a hard time having clients getting to our units the way it is. And so if we increase parking significantly and people from the apartment building or, or the resident, excuse me, the retail on the new proposed building are going to park in our area, we're going to then force our clients to cross First Avenue, which is extremely busy currently. It's going to be more busy as, as this building comes up. We can't afford any, any more parking in our area. It's, it's too tight the way it is right now on First Avenue. I hear the argument of, well, there's a parking ramp across the street. Previous to, to my being in this current building, I was in the strip mall where the Subway and Caribou are. And at the time I was there, the apartment buildings were being built across the street. And we heard the same thing, that the public parking is where they're supposed to be parking. But what really happened is they parked where the TCF Bank building was at the time and parked in our strip mall area and caused all kinds of challenges. So I just don't buy the fact that people are going to rent in the proposed building, cross Nicollet to park in the public parking when they can just cross First and park in either the Cub Foods parking lot or in, in our area. I've seen that happen before. And what's going to happen is what you had mentioned earlier. As the parking becomes harder and harder, it's going to be harder for us retail people in the condo building we're in to generate enough business, which is going to bring down the value of our, of our properties. Since we purchased 10 years ago, those of us who are original, the values of our properties have gone down by 50%. The tax values have decreased 40%. That's a significant impact upon the tax revenue generating ability of the, of the city and county. And if you continue to, you know, go from 130 units to 150, 160, 170 units, you're just going to continue to affect us negatively. So I'm opposed to, to increasing the building size unless if there can be more underground parking done. Get two or three tiers of underground parking to, to relieve the parking. Do you have any questions of me?
Commissioners, questions of? No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Anyone? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any additional questions of staff? No, okay. Did you have, Joe, did you want to speak?
I will only respond to the idea that we have not sent any plans to our neighbor Jeff. Like I said, I've been reaching out to Jeff's office since last September. Numerous emails and calls regardless, that's fine. But we've been willing to meet. We have been meeting. And I've been sending out plans and we've done this all before. Unfortunately, we can't always get approval from everybody, but we have done our due diligence. And I think we've done a fair job at working with everyone.
Thanks. Commissioners, discussion. Commissioner Workman?
I'm going to go first.
Sure.
I don't have much to say. I think Joe did a very good job giving us, filling in some holes that we were, needed to be filled from our last meeting. And I'm excited about the potential for a new apartment complex on this corner and I will be voting in favor of it tonight.
Commissioner Benke?
I actually do have a staff question and I need to direct it to Brian. I notice on the existing site plan, and I apologize for going back here, I just went back to my notes here. When you look at the existing site plan of this area, it's the, I think it's the plat drawing. Regina, if you have that?
I didn't include it in the presentation.
Okay. Currently, the area at the gate has numerous, numerous curves that appear to be designed to minimize people what appears to be making the exit from this apartment building's garage and trying to take that left. And the new design doesn't have that. It basically tries to do it with a, just a sharp corner, a very low radius or a very small radius corner. And that is shown here. Yep, Regina, it's right there. It's on the bottom left down there.
Sure.
Or, or maybe we're just not seeing the rest of the curve there.
Are, Commissioner Benke, are you referencing the actual driveway of the, of the, of the exit of the parking area there? Or are you talking about the exit onto Nicollet Avenue?
It's, it's actually the exit at the, it's at this location where this garage access is going to be. My issue is that, that that, I think it's the same the city has, staff would have, is that it's so close, it's going to be so tempting for people to try and take that.
Yeah, and, and again, we're, we're, we are hoping that the gate that's supposed to be there, when it is operable, that gate does function as it's supposed to function. I mean, people simply can't get through it. I mean, it's, it's going to function in that way. We surely could work with the applicant to put a reverse curve into that driveway, similar to what the access is on the, on the Nicollet, you know, to try and prohibit that, that feel that you can turn left.
Okay.
We definitely could do that. We could surely work with them to do that. In fact, I think we've done that on, on other projects here recently. So absolutely, we can run that by them.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that note.
Um, I, I'd like, I'd like to draw back the attention that this applicant has produced an application that is not dramatically different than anything that was approved in 2004. I know we've heard some stuff this evening in reference to some private agreements. To be real honest, in many cases, we have people that talk to us about things like that. Then that's not our, that's not within our realm of what we're here. We're here about land use and, and the, the property has sat empty for a long time. I'd like to see some development there. I know that people get used to something sitting empty and then may expect some other different development. But this was really close to the original development as outlined for the entire area. So as I said earlier, I would be in support of this application this evening. I know that everyone has a few small things to tweak, the size of the development, turn lanes on, on garages and some brick. And as we tweak the, the number of units and the underground parking, I know that the plan is that if you have to add parking, you'll have to expand the underground parking underneath the courtyard. Once again, a fair amount of stuff that, at our detail level, I, I'm not really necessarily looking for. I have, I have faith in staff that they will do that, so. Commissioners, any last words? Commissioner Workman?
No, I echo what you just mentioned and I think this is a good thing for Burnsville, so I'm excited.
I would stand for a motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move that the planning commission recommend approval of the planned unit development amendment for a four-story mixed-use apartment complex with up to 172 units, 8,000 of retail. Underground and surface parking located at 50 Travelers Trail, subject to the following conditions. Number one, as written. Number two, to be changed to should the unit count require changing the massing of the building that you brought back, the planning commission? Numbers three through 10 as written. And then I would like to add number 11 to be that the retail to have 80% glass to meet the framework of the heart of the city. Number 12 to be that the landscaping at the commercial to be moved away from the building to meet the framework of the heart of the city. And that the, that attempt to be made to recess more of the decks along the Nicollet Avenue facade.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Discussion on that if we could before.
Let's need a second at first.
Yeah, but we have a motion on the floor, so we, we need to either have a second or the motion fails.
I won't second that right now.
From a lack of a second, the, the current motion we have on the floor fails. Commissioners, I still would be entertaining a motion.
Can we have a discussion quickly before?
Okay.
I don't disagree with your item number two. If the, if the, if the building's going to change significantly because of the unit counts and then architecturally it changes from what we're seeing, I would like to maybe have a brush up, but.
Commissioner Workman, or Commissioner, Commissioner Workman, I'd like to involve staff. I think, can you talk to us about thresholds of change where it would have to come back to staff as the conditions are written?
There are, within the city code, within the planned unit development section, there are considerations if certain things weren't either anticipated through the development, development process or there's some minor footprint changes. There, there is the ability to work through those issues through staff. Now, if you're talking, if the applicant's talking about in order to hit a unit count, they're adding a second floor or really changing the footprint of the building significantly, something like that could trigger going back in front of planning commission again. And maybe Commissioner Benke can explain more when he stated massing, what the, what his vision for that threshold would be.
I'm referring back to the plan that was handed out erroneously or whatever, the one that showed that the Nicollet Avenue facade was completely flat. That would be a significant departure to me in a massing standpoint from the current three blocks with the recessed building in between them. Is that, do you want to see that visually? I mean, you know what I mean with that?
So, Ms. Dean, Commissioner Benke's question is if the entire structure on the Nicollet Avenue side, because of the, the changes in the apartment units were to be completely flush with no, no change in relief on the building, that would trigger something to come back to us, correct?
Per city code, it may not.
Okay.
But.
You're looking at like a certain amount of square footage change or that kind of thing. And I'm really looking at it, again, because of heart of the city and the framework, if that changes the character of that significantly, and that would be a significant change in my view. You know, to me, that should generate a review. That's where I was coming from.
Commissioner Workman, other questions?
Well, I mean, I, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Benke that I don't, I would hope that we don't see a flush building on Nicollet and that some relief is a good thing. And I guess I would put my confidence in what Joe presented to us, that the plan and what he's bringing forward is going to meet that. And so I would put my confidence in what we saw tonight, that the finished project. And so I would put my confidence in what we saw tonight, that the finished product will be what, what Joe said it would be. So, I, it's good to be cautious, but I'm also gonna, I would vote with, with the conditions as prob, as written.
So, I would need a motion.
I'd just like to, you know. Okay. I would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the planned unit development amendment for a four-story mixed-use apartment complex with up to 172 units, 8,000 of retail and underground and surface parking located at 50 Travelers Trail East, subject to the following conditions as stated in the background.
We have a motion on the floor. I will, I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And, you have the division of the House. The motion carries three to two, or two to one. Sorry.
We're not used to these small numbers.
And that will go in front of the city council on, Deb gave it to me, so this is my fault, I don't have this up, on the 18th of, of April. Thanks for everyone's time this evening. Have a, for those of you that are gonna leave, have a safe drive home. We are going to continue with our agenda this evening. This brings us to number four, which is actually previously number five, our architectural materials and process review. And Eric Swieber is presenting this evening from WSB. Welcome back, sir. We appreciate your guidance this evening.
Thank you, thank you for having me back.
We are an exciting group.
Yes. I had not seen the PowerPoint, so I was just going through it real quick. Excuse me. So, I am here today to introduce the topic of evaluating the architectural material standards and to describe the five additional meetings beyond tonight that are proposed to conduct this process. To begin with, a little overview on what community development director Jenny Faulkner had requested for WSB to put a proposal together to answer two questions. First, are the architectural materials that Burnsville requires similar to architectural materials of many of our competitor cities? And then, second, if a deviation in those materials that are requested, what is the process for approving any of those deviations? As I'm sure you guys are aware, normally, the city of Burnsville compares itself to nine other cities. Due to some recent discussion and some visible development in Bloomington and Richfield, we are gonna add those two cities to our normal list, so you will end up having a table of 12 cities worth of materials. It would be Burnsville and then these 11 comparisons.
Eric, you had mentioned two specific developments in Bloomington and Richfield. Do you know what those were?
Well, the Richfield one is the, the Target, Home Depot that's on Highway 77.
Yep.
And I think that's 66 there.
Yep.
And then, a couple of the automobile dealerships that have been redeveloped into kind of multiple-story interior storage have some alternative materials that are currently not allowed in Burnsville's code.
All right, thank you. That gives me some reference.
Sure. So, again, you know, Cedar Avenue being fairly visible, 494 being fairly visible, looking at a couple of those. We are going to be looking at material standards for commercial, multifamily residential, and industrial. So, you'll end up getting three different comparisons there. We're still working out a little bit, how many of these communities have special districts, such as yourselves with Heart of the City and the mixed use of whether there's much merit to add those special districts into the comparisons as well. And then, finally, the process both of, is it an administrative process for a deviation all the way to, does it require a public hearing, city council review for a deviation? And in addition to that, looking at which kind of committees they have, whether communities have architectural design review committees or historic preservation committees, that might also weigh in on architectural materials and deviations that Burnsville might not have. Those are listed in the three attachments, and I hope that helps with a little bit of the discussion or give you some ideas of what we're looking for. But regarding the process, there will be, there are proposed to be four planning commission meetings and two city council meetings. So, tonight is the first planning commission meeting to introduce the topic, try to lay out the guidelines and scope, and try to get a comments from you of whether you think we're missing anything of interest to the planning commission. Due to that amount of research, I wouldn't be back actually till June, so I would not be at the planning commission in April. But in June, we will look at the tables and identify the differences between the 11 other cities in Burnsville, and try to get some feedback from you on which direction you'd like to go with any revisions. So then, the plan would be in July, we'd come back with a red line of your existing code to show the changes that are proposed. And then the following night would be expected to actually meet with the city council at their work session to update them on what the proposals are from the planning commission. That schedule would then anticipate in August, a public hearing and your recommendation on any code changes for ultimately an approval by the city council likely in September. So, again, there are three attachments that try to show some of the different categories we're gonna research, as well as, you know, the processes we're gonna evaluate for different communities. I hope that may give you some ideas. As you can see there, we're only listing three of the 12 cities, so it will be a much larger and more in-depth tables with that. With that overview, I would pause for any questions that the planning commission may have.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Benke?
Are we planning on, are we planning on, on listing specific materials, or are we just speaking of this more generally?
No, we, the plan would be to go as deep as specific materials, but even, you know, maybe even a little deeper than, than specific materials such as just simply metal. I know that there are some codes, you know, that talk about quality or thickness of the metal, but there's also comments like that the fasteners are not exposed. We're gonna try to go to that level of detail, if that makes any sense.
It does. A little concerning, actually, because in architecture, one of the, one element that can typically be used as a design element is the exposed fastener. For example, also, you know, when it comes to metal, I think the example of the shopping center at, I'm gonna date myself, on Joe Cannelli's farm, where they used a metal roof, not a roofing, but an actual metal, a structural metal roof in a facade. That, again, can be an architectural technique, but if it's done poorly, it becomes a problem. And that's why I'm struggling a little bit with, if we're actually limiting certain materials, what is then the, the method for somebody that really wants to do this from an architectural standpoint? How do they get that? How do they go beyond what the, what the rule says?
And that is the second part of the, the study of that process.
Okay.
And for the commissioners, we had discussed, this has been a while back, but just generally, you know, how do we deal with architectural materials as, especially as technology changes? How do we keep up with that? You know, and in the past, periodically, there's been some study, our biggest, our biggest study with regard to like commercial industrial type materials was done in 2008. There was a moratorium, and we had a consultant do a bunch of things. But I think in this, what we're trying to accomplish, and I think that, that Eric has done a very nice job in putting this together, is to at least find out, you know, what other, what are the materials? And then what are, what is that process, so that we can keep, you know, instead of being five years or 10 years out of date?
Right.
How can we keep that current?
Yeah, I guess I was struck too, 'cause the, the discussion about the, the facade on that building, I've noticed metal in a number of areas around town that I didn't expect, like at the reader boards, at the menu boards at Burger King, there's, the metal is the backing behind it. And, you know, does our work here impact applicants to that level? Or is it strictly looked at as on the building? And again, that's just a question for going forward. So, thank you.
Commissioner Workman?
I don't have anything glaring that I need to really discuss right now. I'm looking forward to more homework and, and some deliberation on this.
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited, you know, we've, I've had some frustration in reference where I believe we have put applicants in a situation to go through a conditional use permit, that if they were another city, that wouldn't have been the case. I am interested, as you talked about specifically when you mentioned the car dealerships in Richfield, we have a fair amount of car dealerships. Every single car dealership has had to come in front of us, some multiple times, to match something that they already have in their building with a, with a down payment and a conditional use permit. And I'd like to, my goal is to always have as much handled administratively as we can. So, I don't know if it's feasible when, when we're done, but before we present to the city council, I would like to have a, a little bit of back history with some of our previous applications, and are we fixing some of that? I don't think we need to go all the way back, but I, I think I'd, I'd like to be able to know that may, and this is gonna be more about what has been approved or denied in the past and what we, we may have fixed. I, I think that's kind of a, I don't wanna spend a lot of time looking back, but I'm curious, is there anything that we may have denied or that we had a fair amount of work on a conditional use permit that the new rules would still require that to happen? Does that make sense, what I'm asking for? A, a little bit of history, not a lot?
Chair, I, I think it does. I guess I would just ask you, do you recall any specific cases that would meet that?
All of our car dealerships. We've had conditional use permits for Burnsville Toyota twice, both their main building and their service building. We had a conditional use permit for the steel on the Mazda remodel. We had one for the Volkswagen building and for the Subaru building. And that's just on Buck Hill, you know? And I'm just, I, I'm not looking to go back 10 years, but I, I'd like to make sure that applications that have gone through, have we maybe fixed some stuff that required a conditional use permit? And then, as importantly, what is out there today that if we limit fasteners, and I get where we can't limit a Phillips screw, screwing a piece of steel that's typically designed for a farm building, that's not gonna be appropriately attached, but fasteners in today's world can be an architectural feature. And I, I think that also limits it. And we, there's been a lot of great development, the, the development you're talking about with the, the, there's a Target at one end and the Home Depot at the other, and there's a TCF bank, and there's a fair amount of stuff in there. Richfield's had the LA Fitness where they tore down a Kmart, and they did a lot with that. All the car dealerships in Bloomington. I'm excited, you're looking at Egan, there's a fair amount with the New Outlet Mall, or the, and then, I don't know what they call it, but the new development at Yankee Doodle and Pilot Knob, where they tore down the manufacturing facility. I think all of that's important. We had many, many rules many years ago, and, and we're currently not blaming Steve for Burnsville brick. But, you know, every single thing looked the same. And I would hope to not, to not duplicate that.
Chair, I gotta say, that here, here's an interesting piece to this, is that one time, one of the developers that I was working for at the time, we brought in a townhome project, and we were accused of the sea of sameness, because all of the townhouses were quads, and they all looked alike. And, you know, that's where we came from. And it's like now, I think, as we move forward, we, we've tried to keep some of that from happening, but yet, how much limit can you put on, on that and stifle other creativity? And that's, that's where I'm coming at from it.
I wanna open this up, what, exactly what Commissioner Benke said.
Yeah.
That's our goal with this.
Right. And I think the other point you brought up with the car dealers too, that, you know, the number of them up in Bloomington have gone to multi-stories in order to get the amount of parking on-site that they need. And when the Subaru dealer, when I, when I specifically asked him what he was gonna do about parking soon, that's about their only option, but that's a really good option for them, I think, too. But, you know, I certainly can't provide that for them, but it would be awesome to see it come in that way. But you said that there are materials on those buildings that currently are not allowed?
There definitely is a high, I'm thinking of the, I forget if it's a BMW or the Mercedes-Benz, the southeast corner.
Mercedes, it's a BMW building.
Yeah. There's quite a bit of metal on that building.
The screen, that they actually screen the parking ramps with.
Yep.
Right.
I believe our standard, we have something like you can have up to 25% metal.
Sure.
And then beyond that, you need this conditional use permit, and so that's really what, you know, is that reasonable? Does that make sense anymore?
Right.
How does that relate to anybody else?
And this isn't just about car dealerships. But car dealerships have a tendency to keep up with the times. The franchise tells them that the building's gonna have the new look. And we need to be kinda up to date with that. Those people bring a lot of jobs, they provide a fair amount of economic development to the community, and I, I don't want to stifle that. So, I hope we've given you some feedback or some guidance?
A little back, I need to back off on that.
Commissioner Benke.
Thank you, Chair. Franchise architecture has good and bad to it, and I think we have to be careful with that, too, because how do you tell someone like the car dealer that it's okay for him to do the franchise front, because that's what they're told to do by their, their, their company? And somebody else brings something else in, and it's really not up to standards. And my classic go-to is Walgreens. You know, we have, we have several Walgreens that are pretty basic, and then we have several others that are not. And it's like, how can we ask them to do more as they have before, when that franchise is okay just to take it as is? And I, I struggle with that, because I always like to see something other than just straight franchise architecture. But yet, we can't do anything with the car dealers, and quite honestly, they're not bad, you know? And it becomes a real subjective thing, I think, then, is because we're, we're looking at the franchise architecture that we're being given and deciding, is it good enough? And then it comes down to a discussion.
And I, I'm not saying we greenlight every franchise.
Yeah.
And I, but if, if we, if it's, if it's the right thing to do, it fits into the franchise or it fits into a regular application.
Right.
Are you excited about working with us on this? Or do you wanna run out of the room?
No, I, no, you know, you do get that with some of the franchises, because, you know, the Chipotle, Chipotles certainly are pushing kind of the envelope on some of the materials.
Right.
But they're not doing it where each building looks the same. They, they're doing a lot of times using the same materials, but maybe in different ways or different amounts, depending on what community you're in and how they allow it and the like. But, you know, there's some, some franchises that are, are pushing a lot of cities and, and what they would allow.
There's a lot of new material out there that looks like wood, that is not wood.
Yeah.
That adds a fair amount of character to the building. So, we're excited to have you come back to us. Any other guidance from us? He didn't run out of the room, so I think that's good.
No. Just one, if I have one clarification question, are we just looking, just commercial property? Are we looking at maybe like townhome developments or?
He said, he said in the beginning, commercial, multiple residential and industrial.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's a little up in the air whether we're gonna get into the special districts. It's, depends on whether you're really getting similar districts or are. It's, depends on whether you're really getting similar districts or, or, you know, if all these districts kind of have different purposes.
We don't have as many as some cities. We don't have a lot of overlay districts.
Right. But Heart of the City, while I think it, you know, is supposed to have some, you know, old world charm, isn't a historic district that some other cities have.
Yeah.
And that's not, it's intent either. So, we're, we're kind of, that's why on, on this one in particular, we have special district requirements at the end to kind of note that and then evaluate whether we want to go back and start looking at those.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening.
No problem, thank you.
We will move to item number five this evening, which was originally item number four. And Ms. Garros will be speaking from the podium or from your chair this evening?
Well, it's up to Planning Commission.
I'm good with.
Stay in your chair, Deb.
All right, stay in your chair, Deb.
We have a relatively light agenda at your next meeting, if you would like to have this brought back with the other Commissioners here. Really, this is something that, in terms of the Planning Commission work plan, this is an item that came up a number of years ago, and it's just been on our work plan year after year after year. And I think most recently, the Marine Baptist Church maybe shed some light on this issue. And it's really that in the single-family zone, we really have very few standards for guiding development. This is also something that we're going to be discussing a little bit with City Council tomorrow night in terms of like residential compatibility, because we really don't have standards when it gets to low density. And the issue has come up, primarily with church projects, with religious assembly, we've had this. But there are some city projects also that we've had that are in neighborhoods where we have an essential service, maybe a pump station or something like that, that's in the middle of a residential zone. Some of the other uses, you know, are there things that from a Planning Commission standpoint, you would like to have incorporated into the ordinance that are performance-type standards for these different uses? The ordinance, what I tried to do is just, instead of just asking you the question with nothing, try to at least identify, you know, what we currently have that would relate, and then also provide just some examples of some different communities and what they do for, for these types of uses, their performance standards. And really, this is something that is open for Planning Commission as to how you would like to proceed, if you'd like to proceed, and what direction, so that we can prepare the information that you would like to see and, and bring it back to you and be productive in the discussion.
Commissioners, I would like to possibly postpone this with three out of the five here. I think we should move this. The only comment I would have is I'm not looking to be like Manitaka.
No.
And there has to be a happy medium. And so, if that's feasible, I'd like to postpone that discussion to the next meeting, to, there's more than three.
I think so, too, if you'd have the other Commissioners.
We'll support that, absolutely.
All right.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, which is updates. And Commissioners, do you have any updates for us?
None from me, Chair.
Staff, any updates? Well, I do, we did hand out the draft meeting, which we have now changed.
Which we've now added to.
Sure.
And we have just a couple of dates ahead of us. We have the.
There's a council work session tomorrow night, and we handed that, that agenda out. The agenda, full agenda is online. You can take a look at that, certainly if you are available, and welcome to attend the meeting tomorrow night. There are a number of work sessions where there'll be a lot of planning items this year.
Yeah.
So, this just happens to be one. There'll also be a short update on the comprehensive plan process. Then our next comprehensive plan committee meeting will be on April 17th, Monday, April 17th, so.
Our Mondays are booked.
Our Mondays are booked.
Thank you. Commissioners, with that, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Thanks for seconding that.
Thanks, Ray.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries three zero. Have a safe drive home this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.